Thank you. Good evening, and welcome to the Citroplanning Board Meeting held Thursday. It is August fourteenth, right? The select one here who here at Town Hall. It's a hybrid meeting, the general public is welcome to attend, and first up in your group. We have a post your gen here, it's here a second. We are down like members tonight, so it's late tonight, here we go, alright. Let's get stopped down here. Six thirty, public meeting, protected dwelling, new site plan, Nineteen Woodworth Lane. Hi, how are you tonight?
Good, thank you, all right, you're welcome.
You can just state your name and your address.
Madam Chair, Brian Rehberg from Great Brays Custom Homes on the Apple Home War. So here we have a protected use ADU as you mentioned. This is a, it's gonna be an ADU in a new construction dwelling, so there is currently no dwelling on the lot.
I know, I have looked before.
Yep, so there's nothing there, all you can see are trees. So this will be in the basement level, it's a walkout basement because the first floor level is elevated. You will not be able to see, the ADU will not be visible from the street at all, if you look at the site plan. You can see that the house is pretty far set back from the building, and then there's tree cover pretty much of the entire frontage of the house. And the entrance to the ADU, actually both entrances will be from the rear. One is through the garage, and one is to, you know, directly into the unit from the back. So the square footage on the unit is six hundred forty-one, which is obviously far below the limit. And the total square footage of the entire building is around twenty-eight hundred. And I have it probably here, twenty-seven, eight and nine. So this is a case where this is kind of exactly what the ADU legislation was designed for. This will be for an adult son of the homeowners to have his own dwelling in the basement. As the parents kind of get to advancing age, one of them's a disabled military veteran. And in fact, their current dwelling is actually next door, and their other adult son will be moving to that dwelling. So a lot of three generations on two contiguous plots, all by former Citro President's. Yeah, me too, but that's, you know, that's a different story. There's a pretty good buffer here, you know, a family, family buffer. But yeah, happy to answer any questions, just like I said, a one bedroom, one bathroom ADU in the basement, six hundred forty-one square feet, and kind of, kind of it for Miami.
I can tell you, I have not seen this smaller house being built in Citro for a really long time.
Yeah, it's
It's a bedroom house.
It's fairly modest, I mean, it's a, it's kind of a colonial-ish style house, you know. It's a, it's kind of similar to the, the other houses in that part of the neighborhood prior to getting to the modern continental big subdivision. The goal here really was from the beginning is to build a, a pretty modest house for retirees with space for, for an adult son. Yeah, I, I'm not surprised, this, this probably is the smallest new construction house being built in Citro.
And you've been to conservation?
Yes, yeah, it's actually quite a while ago now, we, we've been kind of moving pretty slowly to get, I think the homeowners are getting finances in order, and there hasn't been a particular rush on it, but this is kind of, you're kind of our last stop. And we have an order of conditions all filed with the registry, reported to the registry, and just getting ready to kind of mark out the construction area, get Marrow Control's in, and have the pre-construction meeting with Jen. We kind of wanted to just get through the planning board first, and like I said, you're our last stop.
Any questions? Square, square, bye. Look, yeah. Alright, I think you have to. Yes, well, I do have a decision to do. A seller dweller, that's what you know.
Seller dweller indeed.
That is one of those, for what?
If you met the gentleman living there, you would find the name apt.
Okay. Alright.
I hope he's watching. Maybe some.
Alright, I move to make the following terms fat, accessory dwelling at Nineteen Woodworth Lane. On July three, twenty twenty-five, Brian Rehberg, on behalf of his client, Len and Susan Keith, applied for accessory dwelling unit ADU, Site Plan Administrator Review for an ADU in a principal dwelling on the property at Nineteen Woodworth Lane. To according to the deed, the property at Nineteen Woodworth Lane is owned by Len and Susan Keith. Both owners signed the application, and there is a letter of authorization for Brian Rehberg to submit an application for a Site Plan Administrator Review for the ADU. Three, based on a floor plan submitted by the applicant, the floor area of the proposed ADU will be approximately six hundred forty-two square feet. The principal dwelling will be two thousand one hundred forty-seven square feet. According to the applicant's application and plans submitted for the proposed new principal dwelling, as the existing dwelling is to be reworked or out, or actually be built.
Yeah.
Okay, one, actually be built, alright. New principal dwelling has to be built, okay? This meets the size requirements of five thirty point one A of the zoning bylaw ADUs, as the bylaw allows fifty percent of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling on nine hundred square feet, whichever is smaller. The principal dwelling of the ADU will be two thousand seven hundred eighty-nine square feet. Four, the ADU will be a complete separate housekeeping unit, and it will be owned one accessory dwelling on the lot. Five, the ADU is subordinate to the existing single family home. Six, the property is a residential A1 and water resource protection zone of districts. Seven, the proposed ADU will have access to two doors, one to the outside and one to the garage. Eight, at least one private off-street parking space is provided for the ADU, as the ADU is located more than point five miles from a commuter rail station, ferry terminal, or bus station. Nine, the ADU will be serviced by Town Water and a private settlement system. DPW requirements, water connections will be met. Ten, the application meets the standards of the Citro Zone bylaw for ADU. Eleven, pursuant to General Laws, Chapter Forty-A, Section Five and Six, the proposed ADU will be subject to the proposed amendments to the Citro book. Zone bylaw regarding ADUs, notice of which was first published December twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, and was duly considered by the Citro in its meeting on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. The town meeting passed the bylaw over adjourned vote. The applicant wishing to proceed with this application, prior to final approval of the bylaw by the Intern General's Office on the pending bylaw, has applied for Site Plan Review. What is this amendment? In use. What is it, what is it?
They don't usually protect them until like September, August, September.
They, they asked for a sixty day extension, I told you that last time. Okay, is there a second? Is there a second?
Second. As amended.
Second, as amended, all in favor? I move to approve the Site Plan Administrator Review of an ADU at Nineteen Woodworth Lane with the following provisions. One, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall substantially conform the architectural plans by whole world architecture plus design of Citro mass. For the rest, for key residents at Nineteen Woodworth Lane, Citro mass dated three twenty-one, twenty five, with revisions through four twenty-one, twenty five, consisting of nine plans, including foundation and lower level plans and details. A dash one, first floor plan, A two, second floor plan, and three elevations, A four, A five, foundation and lower level plans and details, A one, with square footage of ADU, foundation and lower level plans and details, A. Another, with square footage of lower hall. For which lower hall, first floor plan, A two, with square footage of first floor, second floor, A three, with square footage of second floor, separate plan, one sheet of two, one sheet and one of two. And O R, separate plan for Nineteen Woodworth Lane, Citro mass by Marrow Engineers and Land Travers stated date of eighteen twenty point four, with revisions through five thirteen twenty point four. Two, the ADU cannot be used for short-term rental units as defined in the Zone bylaw. Our restricted covenant shall be reported against the property that affect prior to any occupancy permit for the accessory dwelling. The covenant shall run to the town and be enforced by the town through injunctive relief and the property owner required to pay the town's reasonable legal fees and plus successful enforcement of any violation of the restricted covenant. Three, no further expansion of the ADU floor area is allowed without further review by the planning board. Four, the owner is not required to limit either the principal or accessory dwelling unit. The owner shall own both the principal and the ADU. Five, all requirements of the board of town, building department, zoning board, fields, the traffic public works, fire department, and other town agencies must be met prior to occupancy of the ADU. Six, the ADU shall conform all applicable standards in the building, plumbing, electrical, chemical, fire, health codes, and bylaws. Seven, water connection must meet all requirements of the DPW water provision for the ADU dwellers. Eight, any lighting installed shall be downlined to not shed light on the property's properties. Construction work shall not begin prior to seven A M weekdays and eight A M on Saturdays and shall cease no later than seven P M or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or on legal, state, and federal holidays. Construction includes the item of vehicles, to move the materials to the site, and other construction activities. No parking, any vehicles shall be per on the public way. Ten, runoff from the proposed ADU shall not be increased from the property. Eleven, erosion and sedimentation control devices shall be installed to prevent any erosion or sedimentation from leaving the site during construction. Silk socks shall be used as necessary along with stabilized construction entrance. Twelve, the decision must be reported at the registry of deeds prior to a building permit. Any issues, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, thanks a lot.
At six forty-five, we have a public hearing, Site Plan Administrator Review, and stormwater permit in the Village Center and Neighborhood District. Rebus, Brickway Gateway District, Rebus Village Center, yada, 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 I need you to continue which request. I need to read this, I'm going to get, I do need. This has to do with eighteen to twenty Comfort Way. I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing, the major Site Plan Administrator Review and stormwater permit for multi-family buildings in the Village Center and Neighborhood District, Rebus, Brickway, Gateway District, Rebus Village Center, Subdist, N G G C, eighteen to twenty Comfort Way up till August twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five, and six thirty P M, and to continue the term of action for following through the town or up till November twenty-one of twenty twenty-five. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Move her right on, stop, step, one, step away. A publicly protected use accessory dwelling for a Site Plan ADU, so you're approved by Twenty-Six Sylvester Road. I'm getting it. Hello?
Evening, I feel record for the North Engineering, representing the property owner of Town Hall, Paul J. David Higgins, for Willis in the back of the room. As was just stated, we're here seeking Site Plan Review for a five right ADU, so a free dwelling unit at the property of Twenty-Six Sylvester Road. The properties in the A1 zoning district have their existing single family home on it. Single family homes approximately nineteen hundred and sixty-six square feet in size. The lot itself is a complete compliant zoning lot. The intent here is for their daughter to move into the house and reside in the house with her family, and Mr. Stevens to construct this new two-bedroom ADU when he will do that. The ADU is depicted on the plan that we submitted with the application. It's a single-story, two-bedroom unit, approximately hundred and fifty-one square feet of floor area. We've dedicated two parking spaces, essentially within the existing driveway limits for the ADU. Water, electric, would be provided for the ADU. And we've attached a roof to a series of dry wells with a gutter system. We feel the project meets the requirements that are outlined to the extent that they're necessary for five thirty point two. And earlier today, I forwarded an email letter of support from the closest director of matter, Jen Peas. The project, I'm gonna turn it over to you for question and comment.
Well, I think I, I prefer I, I've never put on Sylvester order my whole life, I tell I prefer I did it. I don't know much better, so, better. It seems appropriate to me. Any questions for anybody else gathered? I think you have to, yeah, I, they got a letter today, I didn't test it yet so late, they need a lot of support.
Be about what?
Support. I think you have to. We have to put your, I'm gonna say it slower. There it is. Wonder when you start to be moving? I could tell. Soon as we can go. Just to be, I mean, a decision doesn't get filed till at least fourteen, probably about fourteen days after the board approves it, then it's available. So you're fully aware. All set, everyone?
Yeah.
Yes, I move to make the following findings fat. One, on July twenty-one, twenty twenty-five, Paul J. and David Higgins apply for accessory dwelling unit ADU, Site Plan Administrator Review for an ADU in a attached structure on the property at Twenty-Six Sylvester Road. Two, according to the deed, the property at Twenty-Six Sylvester Road is owned by Paul J. and David Higgins. Both owners signed the application, Site Plan Administrator Review for the ADU. Three, based on a floor plan submitted by the applicant, the floor area of the proposed ADU will be approximately eight hundred fifty-one square feet. The principal dwelling is eight, one thousand eight hundred and eighteen square feet, according to the applicant's application, which number was provided by calculation from the predecessor's office inside of the exterior wall dimension. This meets the size requirements of five thirty point one A of the zoning bylaw ADUs, as the bylaw allows fifty percent of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling on nine hundred square feet, whichever is small. Four, the ADU will be a complete separate housekeeping unit, and it will be owned one accessory dwelling on the lot. Five, the ADU is subordinate to the existing single family house. Six, the property is a residential A1 and water resource protection zone of districts. Seven, the proposed ADU will have access to two doors both to the outside. And at least one private off-street parking space is provided for the ADU, as the ADU is located more than point five miles from a commuter rail station, ferry terminal, or bus station. And the ADU will be serviced by Town Water and a private settlement system. DPW requirements for water connections will be met. Quote, DP double, DP double, whatever. Ten, the application meets the standards of the Citro bylaw for the ADU. Eleven, pursuant to General Law, Chapter Forty-A, Section Five and Six, the proposed ADU will be subject to the proposed amendments to the Citro Zone bylaw regarding ADUs, notice of which is first published December twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, and duly considered by the Citro in its meeting on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. The town meeting passed the bylaw by adjourned vote. The applicant wishing to proceed with this application, prior to final approval of the bylaw by the, of the bylaw by the Intern General's Office on the pending bylaw, has applied for Site Plan Review and sent statements. Is there a second?
Yes.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move to approve the Site Plan Administrator Review of an ADU at Twenty-Six Sylvester Road with the following provisions. One, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall substantially conform the architectural plans by Bethany Builders LLC, the accessory dwelling unit, David and Paul Higgins, Twenty-Six Sylvester Road, Citro mass dated six sixteen point five, consisting of sheets A one point two floor plan and A one point three A exterior view of the terrace porch. Site and separate plan, sheet one of two and sheets two of two, Twenty-Six Sylvester Road, Citro mass by North Engineering Company Inc., dated seven seventeen point five, with revisions through seven thirty point five. Two, the ADU cannot be used for short-term rental units as defined in the Zone bylaw. Our restrictive covenant shall be reported against the property to doubt any occupancy permit for the accessory dwelling. The covenant shall run to the town and be enforced by the town through injunctive relief and the property owner required to pay the town's reasonable legal fees and plus successful enforcement of any violation of the restricted covenant. Three, no further expansion of the ADU floor area is allowed without further review by the planning board. Four, the owner is not required to limit either the principal of the accessory dwelling unit. The owner shall own both the principal and the ADU. Five, all requirements of the board of town, building department, zoning board, fields, the traffic public works, fire department, and other town agencies must be met prior to occupancy of the ADU. Six, the ADU shall conform to all applicable standards in the building, planning, electrical, mechanical, fire, and health codes and bylaws. Seven, water connection must meet all requirements of the DPW water vision for the ADU. Eight, any lighting installed shall be downlined to not shed light on the property's properties. Nine, construction work shall not begin prior to seven A M weekdays and eight A M on Saturdays and shall cease no later than seven P M or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or leading state and federal holidays. Construction includes item of vehicles, to move the materials to the site, and all other construction activities. No parking, any vehicles shall be per on the public way. Ten, runoff from the proposed ADU shall not be increased from the property. Infiltrators, as shown in the plan, shall be installed three feet above estimated seasonal high water. Eleven, erosion and sedimentation control devices shall be installed to prevent any erosion or sedimentation from leaving the site during construction. Silk socks shall be used as necessary along with a stabilized construction entrance. Twelve, the decision must be reported at the registry of deeds prior to building permit fee issued. Thirteen, a basement cannot be converted to finished space for the ADU without further review, as the ADU is the area of its maximum square footage. Fourteen, three lines to north side of ADU shall remain undisturbed as long as possible. Is there a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm telling you, I'm going to go with something for three, four, get a little side way, keep the thing. I have left the plans, issues that I couldn't incorporate, and out of stock. That's close. I recommend it. I move forward with the plans for the Site Plan Administrator Review and stormwater permit for one multi-family building in the Village Center and Neighborhood District, North Citro Village District, Outer Village, B C F, N S V, all of it. At three forty, enter road as addition to the decision for the project dated June thirteen, twenty point five, and refiled for July fourteen, so I'm talking about two correct scripters errors. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Then we have the discussion, changes to the Water Resource Protection District bylaw. Karen, set us up. You want to start, Rosie?
Sure. My name is Musar Beni. Oh, the dude, okay. Thanks. I'm also a chairman. Live at twenty-three, again, past Julian in town. Also chair the Water Resource Protection. What I'm trying to do today, because something came to light earlier this year, a few months ago, North Engineering submitted material for comment, November eighteen, twenty, in Conway, that was just gathered today. And
You need to speak up, there's not just these people, I live here, so. No, that doesn't help, you have to talk to the Apple.
Oh, okay, thank you. In those materials, North Engineering cited, unfortunately, accurately that the buffer zone, kind of which I'll get into in a minute here, does not apply to that particular location because of the wording in the Water Resource Protection District bylaw. And so we do have a wording problem, and I believe we need to fix it. So the Water Resource Protection District bylaw was established in two thousand and fourteen. I came to town after that, not sure all the discussions took place there. But it's based on mass D E P regs. And the intent, I believe, at the time, was to make it more situative-oriented, using wording in descriptions that make it easier to be understood. There's a kind of generic wording in mass D E P regs. And they point to different sections in different regs, so it gets a little confusing. So in the Water Resource Protection District bylaw, there's a section called findings, like definitions, and it accurately identifies hole open bucket pond, tack factory pond, and the reservoir and the tributaries as the water, surface water source for the town. Also identifies hole open bucket specifically as being the surface water supply source, so that's directly, as we all know here, the water treatment plant exists, the water treatment plant is located in the hole open bucket pond. However, moving forward to the buffer zone paragraph, which is an enforcement paragraph in this bylaw, it talks about a non-disturbance buffer zone. It says, the non-disturbance buffer zone shall exist one hundred and fifty feet horizontally from the high water mark of tack factory pond reservoir. But I'll pause and go back, the findings identify tack factory pond separately from the reservoir, separately from hole open bucket pond. But in the enforcement paragraph, it conflates tack factory pond and the reservoir into one thing, but excludes hole open bucket pond.
That's a problem.
That's a problem. Additionally, looking at the actual mass D E P regs in effect today, the buffer zone they define is four hundred feet from surface water sources and a two hundred feet from tributaries. So the distance is also off in our wording. Now, some of that may have changed over time, I'm not sure, but, but there are a few things that we got to clean up here. So in front of you, I believe, is my suggested wording changes. So so my suggested wording changes for the findings is, and this is something from Kevin Caffrey's looking at potentially this in the distance someplace.
Very long years.
Yeah, so one of the things he's talking about is the lack of surface water. And so he's had discussions, again, hypothetically, at this point, about the town potentially purchasing some additional land and creating additional water. and creating additional water storage in town. So that's why there's some wording in here that's plus any future inland surface water sources. So in the findings, I'll just read the suggested wording. The Old Open Bucket Pond, Tac Factory Pond, the reservoir, plus any future inland surface water sources. I'll just pause and say that inland surface water sources is coming out of the mass D E P regs. That's how they describe reservoirs. And their watersheds and tributaries and the groundwater underlying situate are the primary sources of situates existing in future during water supply. So it's adding that plus any future inland water sources. And then in the buffer zone paragraph, instead of restating each individual location, just refer back to the findings paragraph. And replace one hundred and fifty feet with four hundred feet horizontally per the mass D E P regs. And two hundred feet horizontally from the edge of all tributaries and reservoir watershed, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I do believe there's a problem in the bylaw and this was my suggested wording.
All right, so couple things. I don't think at this, I'm not going to send this to town council at this point in time. However, I'm not sure we can regulate a future inland surface water source. But town council will comment on that at the appropriate time. I, I think the wording changes are fine. I think that, I think that doesn't matter once we've got a bylaw. We have to apply by state regulations. So, you know, is there a four hundred foot no touch to the Old Open Bucket Pond? There is, is there two hundred feet from tributaries and the other? Cause Old Open Bucket is classified as the surface water supply. That's the class A over the the other ones are not, you know, they're not in the same category as we learned when we did the project up on the copper bridges. We like to treat them all the same. We, we, the planning board, like to treat them all the same because they should be treated the same. Because this is our public water supply that we are attempting to attempt. So I support these. Back in two thousand and fourteen, the planning board was the sponsor of the article. I would, they were, tell you.
Was I there?
No, I don't know. I mean, I, I've gone back and looked at the stuff. And I would highly recommend the planning board be the sponsor of the, of the article this time again. Uh, I wanted to get this before you early because then as, as the fall goes on, you know, I can let them let, when there's time, I can send it to town council for, for review, et cetera. I mean, because, but we'll be still working. We'll, we'll put in a placeholder in the warrant for the spring town meeting. We'll have our workshop in separate, in Southern Hall area in January of this, this will be on.
And you check some?
Yes.
Were you involved in the meeting with Kevin Caferty, Woodrow, Dan Fenley, about Mooney's property on Old Open Bucket Road, the framework law?
Uh, I was not. I've heard some discussion about that.
Yes. Okay. I think suggested that C P C that the committee be involved because Mooney wants to sell this property. And there are springs up there, et cetera. Supposedly the town's gotten interested in further obtaining surface water. Yet something to the effect of going to one person, six hundred thousand gallons a day come off that property and go into the ocean before or after the dam on Old Open Bucket Road, on Old Open Bucket Pond. So C P C is in the process of trying to figure out, this is seventy-nine acres of land. And this is viable, surface water is, what is viable for aside from open space? And how much is upland? How much is water? Whatever. Just to let you know that thoughts are being scooted out there to think about this as a project somewhere for both town administrator and F D W based on next step.
You know what?
I honestly don't know why I wasn't at that meeting. I understand that a number of, a number of years ago, uh, and as a matter of fact, it was Orinberger that presented it with the possibility of taking down land and using it for water. And it was decided, no. Yeah. And the thing is, we've seen, you know, something that could lose any type of discussion. Which I thought was unfortunate. So we are, C P C is trying, it's not up to C P C to sponsor this. It's really, they can't do that, but rather if the Water Resources Committee could look into this and see if this is something viable.
Should I ask you, if C P C owns there? Does the town have the right to take the water off of it?
That is a very good question. Thing is, once it can, it's possible to basically have one part of it for our recreation and one part upland and there are ways to do this.
So C P C also find over?
No, no.
Are concerned?
Mooney, Mooney probably still, he's still, he wants to retire, he wants to go away. And he really wants to see his property made in its current state. So I'm just throwing that out. And I wish he hadn't been involved in that meeting. I requested that somebody from Water Resources.
And when was that roughly?
Um, within the last week or two.
Oh. Good.
You know, price, we're probably, you know, it's assessed right now at thirty-three thousand dollars.
Thirty-three thousand?
It says.
Agriculture, it's right on that line.
Yeah.
I go, I imagine, watch my life for second.
Thirty-three thousand. And the thing is with agriculture, the town is supposed to refuse it. So I think it's something, I looked at it as understanding there are boxes of material available to go through all of this to see what's what. And I, I think it's a viable alternative and members of the C P C committee were all advocates of how can we figure this out? It's open space.
Okay. Well, I'll certainly chat with Dan.
Reach out to Dan Fenley too.
Dan Fenley?
Yep, he's chairman of C P C. And Penny Pikes on conservation. Karen? And of course, the planning board. We need to be involved and you were not included in this meeting, were you? No, that's why we're operating in silos and I have a real problem with that. I really do. This is a community that should work together. So that's just my two cents.
I think, Rosie, if you find, if you have records card back to two thousand and fourteen, you might find some information in, in that as similar paragraph of the bylaw.
Oh.
I mean, I, I would just check your information.
We need to spell that time, Mr. Orinberger. These are all, maybe you're trying to question me. I don't know about two thousand and fourteen, but this was that about twenty years. This was a while and I was somehow involved in something. I've been on the rock for four years. So, but I do remember that and did you answer the question, I'm not interested. It's not viable and then someone said that they had done a test well recently and it wasn't any good.
I didn't hear that.
And I don't know if that's true. I'm trusting no one suspect them all.
Freya, would you like to?
I would. Yes, thank you, uh, Freya Schlegel, uh, select board. Um, I just wanted to add that, yes, they, I believe they tested, they've, there is no groundwater that they can um, use. And I don't believe that the D E P supports surface water at all. I think it's a lot harder to get surface water permits than um, groundwater at this point. That's what I was told. I was told about the meeting, but there was already two select board members. Um, I believe Jamie and Andrew went to the meeting, so I couldn't go.
That's too bad, cause you should be on that committee.
That's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
I just don't think that we should dismiss it out of hand. Freya?
The water's not portable?
Then it's surface water, it's hard to gather, a permit or whatever.
Well, the discussion that we've had together in the past was, um, it's kind of curious. It's to, it could be converted into a retention base in some way, shape or form. One of his concerns is, of course, we have very limited surface water capacity. And in the winter time, um, we all lament the fact that a lot of water runs over out of Old Open Bucket Pond in the river and then can be deflected someplace. That is part of what he discussed with us.
There's already a channel, whatever you want to call it, that runs from Antipode, Old Open Bucket Road and it goes down. And Mooney takes the post or whatever boards out, so the water will run through and then it comes back down. Otherwise, the whole thing. So I'm, I just really think it's something to look at.
Okay, I think somebody has to do some research on what you can do with a bomb.
Yes.
I agree with you. I think there are blend bombs or that then.
I agree with you.
Because it makes a difference.
Yes, it does.
Yes, obviously. You'll have to hold what you do. Can you retire me? Thank you for bringing this to water protection. Uh, what we have in this question is the town meeting.
Yes.
Yes. So we got to turn on initiative. I think we have some more information to go on that and call us. Share her cup, other point eighth, when, where, how come about eighteen to twenty?
Yes, so again.
And then it has to be a gas station.
Yep.
Is that right?
Yes, it does.
Has an active twenty-one eighty. For interest.
Yep, definitely.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Look at that side. Old business, new business, growing body.
Minutes.
Other housekeeping.
Two minutes, move the minutes of um, July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Finished?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye. I, uh, most of the purchase orders. Number two, six, oh, one, three, six, nine, in the amount of two hundred and thirty-nine dollars for period review services at nineteen square place. Purchase order two, six, zero, one, three, six, eight, in the amount of two thousand five hundred eighty dollars for period review services at seven ninety-nine, eight oh three country way. And purchase order two, six, zero, one, four, Mac two, in the amount of one hundred sixty-three dollars and forty-seven cents. The planning board lettered it stationary.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Want to discuss this all? All right, so we had one risk, we had one person we have not interviewed, this Scott White. He already, he couldn't come last time, he couldn't come tonight. Do you want to interview him or do you, do you really think, do you think that the board needs an option in February at this point? And we have less special permits now because most, most accessory dwellings will not be by special permit. I know one coming in sometime in the next six months that will be a special permit. But uh, what, what does the board want to do with this option?
Well, I appreciate your surprise interest, but you really need to be available.
Yeah.
She's still up here. I said let her go from there, let her come up naturally.
Someone else did approach me and said, oh, I never got the resume and I don't have a resume.
Well, then you have to.
Maybe I'll just send her to talk to you.
Sure, I think she's a real turn town. Keep it up until we find a raise.
I mean, so you want to just keep it up until we have some, you don't wish to interview Mr. White? Okay. And will this, um, do you want me to advertise again?
No.
Nope. Okay.
Just let me have it be. Well, we have a few stuff going, but I, I think we're okay for a couple months.
Yeah, I mean, I think we are, we have, I mean, what do we have right now? We have the special permit in Comrock, we have uh, that's the only special permit we have.
We, the planning board lived forever with us.
Yeah.
It was forever with us. So it was mixed feelings about bringing him an option. That could do it.
We'll just wait for the rate list.
Okay.
All right. You think it knows anybody?
Knows anybody.
We gave some reports, everybody we gave some?
Uh, we was at community preservation, um, on the night. And the C P C voted to spend to the off the town meeting in November, the dish pan property on Black Road, seven hundred thousand dollars. The cover work, um, house allocation, that was approved uh, because they need repairs and up, that type of thing. And then the G R hall, that was approved as well. And Morticine Lincoln, that's money to run the intergette for whatever's, it's all approved.
Do you want to match one yesterday to those accounts? I will need it right here.
Okay.
I'll post. I think it's like, I'm so getting. I'm not a sports fan.
It is, no, we have a lot, we don't mind, we have money. Almost have money. Here it is. Some of the recommended funding. Not everything, but we got love.
Right? But nothing housing, nothing, nothing's coming for you guys to possibly. Um, I just pulled the email from C P C, they were about, we saw, yes, we have to go on. Aren't they?
And you got some updates in your phone? You want to report out on that?
Yeah.
Cause there's something that happened today.
So they want to, I could be prepared for the politics of what we do. You could speak to Ms. Justin about that. But like the walking ad, you know, whatever, they just kind of learn what they're talking about.
Rebecca, just, the, the releas, the release of the, uh, there's an economic business survey that was released today online. The business community.
Oh.
That's the biggest thing they're working on right now.
She's going to.
It's right there. It's right, Rebecca has the. It's on their website, the E D C books.
Oh, who else is there on the E H C R? I'll show you a little dashboard. Okay. Yes, you will board E D C, right? They're all kind of regular people.
Yes.
Yeah.
We've got about five mutual new starters.
They want communication. And everybody's supposed to be liaising with somebody, so um, I think it is kind of a, a pulse of what's happening. Many people are, who don't give them a Lusha, just go, both of them, because they're already what they're doing. That's it. Okay, I, I, I don't think we're going to, we're supposed to each other, they're big nuggers. All of that. Well, I can take what you want to trade.
Our meeting minutes.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, oh, yeah, but I, I just, it's like, it's one of those pieces to see, like, in, in, yeah. So, that's all. I think.
If I may, I think it's about, I think Karen's right. And I think it's about giving teasers to go in depth. So when you look at their updates, there's a sentence or two. And if it interests the public or other boards, then you can go into further.
Yeah.
Detail with minutes.
Yeah.
But the liaisons don't have to report any great details. Just capture the, the highlights from the night.
We're just a local bank, it's actually, it's just too bad, again, we don't have a local bank. That's what we're talking about. Stop, okay.
Really?
I don't have any tickets, I go next Thursday for their investigation. We'll, we'll hopefully rack that up. And let's hope that, so you put it for us, that's your job. So. And if you can, Karen, are you busy?
Oh, yeah, we're very busy. Exactly. So, um, next meeting, I asked, um, Karen turned off once outdoor seating for Cassie Burden. I've asked her to come in for a discussion, um, for modification of the waiver. You guys said no outdoor seating. She wants to put seating up on the front sidewalk, that was the reason. And so I've asked her to commit for the discussion. I'm going to, um, and that's, kind of asked Steve Leach to come in as well. He wants to put patios on all the units of the cottage court at that K Ford place.
He's not enough room.
Well, so I've asked him, I said, I think that this was a special permit, I think we should come into the board. He also wants to modify a little bit of the fence. As it comes, well, I, I haven't got the plans, but I can a hundred percent. I think I understand what he wants to do. I think he wants to put a tapered section down as we get closer to Ford place. I think, so go from a sixteen to a four foot section so that it's a little bit more of a fall. I believe town, I saw a draft of the letter town council sent to the A G's office. I asked if I could get the final letter in response to Mr. Chell's comments on the A U bylaw. I haven't got that yet, but I mean, town council wrote a very, very good one. We got a letter from the EPA today. You know, we, we knew it was coming, we're in violation of M S four. And so we're, I'm already working on draft, revising the best stormwater regulations. We'll be having a stormwater workshop at the end of, um. September and public care and, and October. We have to have the greatest job by the end of the year. The one is M S four, even the bill roll. It's municipal separate stormwater system. The town has to have the certain requirements for under the EPA, under the Clean Waters Act. And so we have a permit and we have to, we have to.
Do what the permit says?
And out违of the violation of the permit. They, we have to add into the regulations. We have to add ninety percent T S S. I'm trying to put it in layman's terms so that you understand.
I appreciate it.
We have to add ninety percent T S S for everywhere.
Bone suspended solids.
Reboot all the way. We have to add phosphorus removal too. And most of the phosphorus removal should generally not be a problem if you're doing can filtration. So we, we have, we have the first, the first draft of the regulator, draft regs has gone out to people in, some people in town and our M S four consultant. I also have sent in to the, the three planning board consultant engineers. Because these are the people who review the stormwater permits. Let them see what they think. But we have to, we have to do, we have to do this certain stuff. And we have to do it by the end of the year.
And how do they know what they want?
How do they know what they want?
How, how do they look at all the bottles?
They've looked, they've looked at our bylaw, they've looked at our regulations. The regulation is something that we can, we can do right now. We don't have to wait for town meeting, but we may have to change the bylaw to be. The consultant will be looking at that too. But at, at this time, when, since we're going to modify the regs. I'm also going to add stuff in the regs that, that working groups working on before, before COVID hit. I'm not adding, I do not agree with all the changes that the working group wanted. And I'm incorporating some of the changes. So we changed some of the definitions. The, the work we wanted to have some limits, like say here, at eighty percent of the value of the disturbance. You need to apply the plan, eighty percent of the impervious you need to, you know. You're gonna have to give an asphalt to make sure you're still sticking to it. We're putting more requirements, which basically we're already asking for anyways, for asphalt. And some other stuff like that, we're gonna be, um, we're putting in the regs to change the rainfall down to Atlas fourteen. And so some of our consultants are already doing Atlas fourteen. Because it's the responsible thing to do. So, but the most part that the EPA wants is, you know, we have to do this, um. Yeah, we have to put the T S S and, um, about the T S S, the fact that have, um, phosphorus. It shouldn't be that big of a, and you have to treat an inch of water, have to treat an inch of water.
Oh.
Okay, instead of half, so everybody's gonna have to treat an inch.
That ought to be more than one time.
That's EPA required.
I know, there's.
And that's what we scared behind. It's so up. We can't, we can't, we can't get out of that.
Nope.
I mean, we technically, technically it's for basically major disturbances above.
Yeah.
We say fifteen thousand. We believe that, you know, regular single family home sites contribute to.
More than they should. So.
And it seems to be in that work group.
They wanted twenty five thousand.
No, they didn't want to change that at this point in time.
Didn't.
So, I mean, so it's coming down and I'm just keeping you, you know, we got the letter. It's, it's something we have to do, so we have to have these stormwater up in here. Let's say, um, workshop.
You don't, they don't, you're, please, oh, yes.
I have a question on that. This may be, I won't apply to this, but for people that are down on their own building house. They have under guidelines, so they don't have to put a stormwater in, right, you're saying here, what, what's, what is it?
Well, our stormwater bylaw says if you disturb fifteen thousand square feet. Increase, um. Increase impervious on that developed plot by twenty five percent or more, or then it leaves storm.
That's what.
And that's been our, that's been our practice says.
Okay, so but if they're under that, but then they build and then there's all these other things added to the house. So that's, that's gonna just be part of the practice, right?
Well, I mean, our stormwater bylaw is very specific. You can't, it doesn't matter if it's separate phases, separate owners. You have to, if, if all of a sudden you're at nineteen percent now, lo and behold, you come in to get a building permit for another garage that adds more impervious. Well, that, that, that's when it will trigger the storm. It doesn't trigger till you get to twenty five percent. But it's, it's not of the lot coverage, it's increase in impervious area. And this is the hardest thing.
But I'm too freaking about it, so. That's what we're, that we're, that we're.
No.
Which is what they're gonna have.
That's, I mean, that's, that's where we are.
Okay, do you have a motion to a juror?
So.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, good night.
Good night. So we have a number of things, we have the sign.
We got a.